All right. Good evening. Today is Wednesday, March 9th at 6:30 PM. This is the only tangy Board of Education regular meeting. Call the meeting to order. Would you please call the roll?
Dr. Deborahco?
Present.
Mr. Lester?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
Dr. Wise?
Here.
All right. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
So moved.
Mr. Lester, a second, please.
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? No? All right. Please call the roll.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Dr. Deborahco?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And then Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
All right. So we'll do a brief presence report. So just a couple of quick things. So tonight, we've got the much anticipated state of the schools report from Mr. Wright, as well as the district calendar. And it's exciting night because we get to name middle school number six, which is up in between Cheshire Elementary and Berlin High School. So it's exciting, exciting time. I know, Ms. Patrick, you've got some updates from the Facilities Committee you'd like to provide?
I do. Do you mind if I first? I'm on the OSBA Board of Trustees.
Sure.
And the last meeting, I was sitting here on a meeting for training.
That's right.
And then we had our, I think we meet about three times a year. On March 6th, was it Saturday? We had our meeting. And one of the items that we talked about was House Bill 126. That's where we, as a board, have to pass a formal resolution to contest property valuations. And that was voted out of the House, zero to 90. So it's back with the Senate.
Oh.
Which is good. That's what we were wanting. And the Ohio School Boards Association joined last year. They dropped out of the National School Boards Association and formally joined the consortium of state school boards. There are 22 states that have joined. It's about half the price that we paid. We weren't getting legal representation, really, with the national school boards. They didn't feel that they were managing funds well, so they voted to join the consortium. Moving on to facilities, Brandon and I attended the facilities meeting last week, and they did some number crunching. And we're still waiting for some additional information from Scott Leopold that we get, that we use for enrollment projections. But last year, there were 1,172 permits pulled in our district. And so when we look at that, we normally, we look at permits pulled, and that kind of starts the numbers with enrollment. Our current enrollment that is used for the five-year forecast has a step down. So I think it's 700, then it goes to 650, 650. We are forecasting that we will be more than the 1172 in 2021. So they're going to revisit the numbers and then take a look at when the curve may flatten. And that all being said, we had made the suggestion to the board that we kick out elementary school 17 to the, was it 25, 26? And I think they're going to reevaluate that and recommend moving it back up. Construction costs, the inflation is crazy, and every year that we wait, it could be an additional $3 million to build. So, and with Intel coming in, there's a bit of concern that we can even get people to bid the project. So it might be in our best interest to move that up. And so that's what the committee will be voting on next meeting to bring forward to the board. Also, it was mentioned that we are going to need at least, I believe, three SLCs next year, which eats up capacity a little bit quicker than anticipated. And if we do move forward with elementary 17 for the 23, 24, is it 24, 25 school year, then we might be able to combine some of our redistricting efforts when we do the middle We also discussed the tech building project. So I'm going to suggest that this evening, after we convene, that we take a little field trip down to technology and take a look at why this has become an issue. One of the things that could work to our favor is Don Kenney donated land kind of in front of, on the other side of the condos in front of Olentangie High School. And we have a couple parcels that you can't really use for much. And then Orange Township has the center parcel. They would like to make a swap with some property that we have behind Olentangie High School. And then we would have that whole lot of land that we might be able to put a technology facility in. So, did I miss anything else?
No. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone have anything else? Nope. All right. We'll go to our first presentation item, our only presentation item, the State of the Schools. Mr. Wright?
As I've heard Principal Spinner say, everybody's talking about it.
We are.
Light this candle. That's right. Well, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for everybody in attendance. Always love having, having people here at our meetings. So again, thank you for this opportunity to present the State of the Schools Report for the 21, 22 school year. We developed a new long-term strategic plan in 2017 and 18. We began presenting to the board and the community a report that aligned with that strategic plan. I updated the board on our progress with four strategic priorities last summer, and now will present a broader perspective related to the strategic priorities and organizational goals with reference to our current state and the future direction of our organization. So let's first begin with a review of our strategic plan, and that starts with our mission, our vision, and our values. We are each aware that the foundation of our district is our mission, to facilitate maximum learning for every student. It's an endeavor that not only impacts over 22,000 Olentangie students, it impacts our entire community. Our vision is to be the recognized leader for high performance and efficiency in education, and that's what we are striving to become as an organization. We know that strong schools are essential to long-term growth and prosperity, and we are committed to making smart, financially responsible decisions that ensures that our students can achieve and our community can flourish. Finally, our values are the behaviors that we expect from everyone in the organization so that we can achieve our mission and move closer to the vision of our organization. So as we go looking back to August of 2020, the last time I presented a State of the Schools Report was actually during the 2018-19 school year. As we look back at our progress within the strategic plan, I really want to take a second to remind everybody the context in which we've been accomplishing this work and all that we have accomplished since my last report. This video is a snapshot of the spirit in which we approach every challenge we face here and reminds us all of the optimism we bring when tackling a pandemic and finding the myriad of solutions necessary to succeed.
Welcome back, Olentangie. You guys got this.
We got the safety part down. Now we're trying to work on making it feel like school again. I think we're going to be able to do a great job of that.
It's going to be challenging, but we can all do it. We can all work together to make it happen.
Bring it together, Olentangie.
Thank you. When did we present that? That was?
August of 20.
August of 20. All right, Dustin, get me back out of here. I'm trying.
Here, I'll move it.
You got it. All right. So it's, it's one thing, you know, I'll talk a second about navigating a pandemic, though. It's one thing for a school district to successfully pass a levy, but another thing to do it in the beginning of a global pandemic. As we navigated facilitating maximum learning in a COVID world, we continue to offer our students meaningful experiences within the health parameters and met students where they were in all facets. We grew in all ways, from enrollment to enhanced programs like committed distance learning, to the number of schools, to what we learned, and emerged from the pandemic as now the fourth-largest district in the state of Ohio. So here's an overall view of our strategic plan. It includes four strategic priorities and 12 organizational goals. And they're not presented here, and please remember that as presented here, they are not in any kind of hierarchy or prioritized order. For instance, I'll be talking about ensuring mastery of learning last in this presentation, but that's simply because of how we organize the presentation, and I really like to save the best for last. Please also remember that there are multiple departmental goals and objectives related to each strategic priority. And when I ask each department to report on progress related to the plan, I receive more information than is possible to share in just one, this one presentation. Much of our accomplishments and information presented is also used to create our district quality profile summary that we release each fall and highlights our most significant key performance indicators. As we move forward, I'll be discussing with you different key performance indicators and the metrics we want to monitor and report on in the future. So let's get to our progress. The first area I'll discuss is our strategic priorities, students and stakeholders, and the goals within alleviating barriers to learning, expanding community engagement, and promoting a culture of inclusive excellence. I'm very proud of the progress that we've made in this area, for we cannot truly facilitate maximum learning for every student unless we alleviate non-academic barriers to learning. We often believe that the work we do in education can be life-changing. The work we do with regard to addressing non-academic barriers to learning can actually be life-saving. So one highlight, in June of '21, Coach Ryan Day and Dr. Houston of Nationwide Children's Hospital shared about the pressure to perform on students and the strategies for Olentangie parents to support their children's well-being. Coach Day is an Olentangie parent and spoke about his personal story and his passion to advocate to de-stigmatize mental health. It was an impactful discussion that has led to additional parent-academy partnerships with Dr. Houston and Nationwide Children's Hospital Initiative on our sleeves. Our future in this area will center on improving the programs and practices we have in place and continue to expand existing partnerships. Dr. Fede's team is creating a robust approach to alleviating barriers to learning that includes preventative curriculum and programs, as well as targeted responses to students in need. The level of community engagement we have here remains consistently strong. The Fall 2021 Quality Profile gave light to the impressive amount of extracurricular opportunities at our schools. And if you want to see community engagement at its finest, attend any event at any one of our 27 buildings, and you will see the outpouring of support, a huge outpouring of support from students, parents, and staff. Our Olentangie Key Communicators Group was reinstated to connect staff leaders, parent volunteers, and engaged business leaders in the community to share key facts and current events at the district level. Most recently, we received great feedback from our winter meeting that was, the information we shared was helpful and very impactful. The next phase for community engagement, while it remains strong, we can always do better. One of the many future expansion opportunities lies in the portion of our community that does not currently have students within our schools, like local businesses, community members without school-aged children, our growing older adult population, and our own alumni. To support the growth of our newly-founded Alumni Association, we began creating Alumni Connection digital newsletters to connect alumni with us and one another. We will continue to work with the Olentangie Education Foundation to expand that network and welcome more alumni into the association. I think it's going to be about 1,700 a year now for the next 20 years at our current graduating class level. And then the final goal in this area of students and stakeholders is promoting a culture of inclusive excellence, which has been a major focus for the district, and I continue to be proud of the work done in this area. While these topics are complex to address and require tough, honest conversations, we remain committed to dedicating resources to this goal as promoting a culture of inclusive excellence allows us to achieve our mission. Upcoming, our second One Community District Service Plunge is coming up on March 19th, which is a day for that all, our students, staff, and community members can come together to support, support local organizations, making an impact in our district. Last month, this Olentangie Schools Special Olympics held their first-ever student-staff basketball game. I'm proud to report that the OSSO basketball team took on the Olentangie Schools Intervention Staff and were able to secure an overtime win. So it was a wonderful demonstration of inclusion within Olentangie. Moving forward, diversity liaisons and clubs continue to promote Heritage Month activities and cultural events to give students, our students, a worldly, informed perspective. In addition, we continue to examine curriculum to ensure freedom from bias and the inclusion of diverse perspectives. And teacher professional development provides staff with tools to instill a sense of belonging in all students and create inclusive classroom environments. The next area I'll discuss in our strategic, is our strategic priority, resource stewardship, and the goals within maximizing investments and revenue, modeling fiscal responsibility and transparency, and managing assets wisely. This year, the district took advantage of historically low interest rates, refunding more than $148 million in debt, saving the district more than, saving the district more than $22 million in gross savings. It's fair to say that the greatest strides recently made in this area are the passing of the first two years of the Fair School Funding Plan in the state budget, and with the governor signing House Bill 169 that allocated over $20 million in pandemic release funds to our schools. These wins benefit everyone in our community as we continue to advocate to keep our local tax dollars here in Olentangie. Moving forward, Mrs. Hatfield's team continues to manage cash flow needs with market rate of returns to maximize investment revenue. We will host a Fair School Funding Summit this June, inviting state legislators and leaders from 34 similarly underfunded districts to celebrate the success of our legislators' work in this area and continue the conversation to keep Ohio Fair School Funding permanently in Ohio law. With regard to modeling fiscal responsibility and transparency, there are a few items listed here for you to see, but the fact that we've received the Auditor of State Award with Distinction 10 consecutive years says it all. This award, given by experts, shows that the district consistently provides clean and accurate records and reports. The Treasurers Department meets regularly with the Finance and Audit Committee to review the monthly, monthly financial reports. The Treasury Team is developing training materials for booster and PTO groups that will continue to be available as these organizations rotate leaders. The goal, the goal to manage our assets wisely is critical if we want to be considered a recognized leader in efficiency in education. As stewards of taxpayer dollars, we must be efficient and manage our assets wisely at all times. We are constantly looking for ways to save money without compromising educational excellence. As is the norm, we open a new building, Shale Meadows Elementary School, on time and under budget. That is particularly impressive, given the pandemic, increasing material costs, and supply chain issues. One of the challenges we face moving forward when managing assets wisely is related to the competing needs of technology and additional needed permanent improvement, permanent improvements across our district, which will only increase as our buildings continue to age and as we grow. We have a five-year, a 10-year, and a 20-year capital plan that we continue to review, make updates, and ensure that funding is available to complete these projects. Moving on, the next area I'll discuss is our strategic priority, internal processes, and the goals within implementing a digital conversion, expanding our talent management strategy, and striving for a culture of operational excellence. The pandemic highlighted the importance of the integral role of technology in the classroom for students and staff. We had already, already begun the work on digitizing our staffing processes, processes, got some tongue twisters in here, which has been a collaboration across departments to integrate, automate, and communicate these updates and introduce our new digital systems. Last week, our human resources team trained all administrators on a new applicant tracking system, and the Treasury Team successfully completed the digital conversion to e-finance plus this past winter. As we plan for the future, a digital conversion is never fully complete because technology is always evolving and improving. We will continue to try to streamline all of our processes for parents, staff, and students, and prioritize network accessibility, reliability, and speed. School and classroom operations rely on technology for basic operation, so we must continue to ensure a stable technology environment. If we aren't planning ahead for increasing speeds and more devices being connected to our network, we will severely damage the efficiency and effectiveness of our district operations. Also of growing importance is security. We must keep student and staff data secure, and we must teach students to be wise consumers who understand their role as digital citizens. With regard to our talent management strategy objective, our human resources department has made significant process improvements. They look at the entire journey of an Olentangie staff member, from a person first making the choice to complete an application, to being selected as a new hire, to their onboarding and orientation, continued professional learning, through their exit or eventual retirement. Olentangie is a destination district with a strong brand and a widely-recognized name in education. Mr. Meyer, Dr. Fede, and their teams continue to strategize ways to attract and retain top talent, top talent, by evaluating the compensation structure, building a positive environment and culture, and ensuring professional development is available for all staff, both classified and certified. A departing staff member shared with us on their exit interview, "I've loved and will always cherish my time in Olentangie Schools and have nothing but positive things to share. My school has amazing leadership and a wonderful culture established by the administration." Next, next steps here is that we're looking to capture, is what we're looking to capture is the Olentangie employee experience over time. We're working with cohorts of new hires to develop their journey in Olentangie Schools, how they develop, and the outcome of their time in our district. We hope to utilize information captured by these employee journey maps to improve the employee experience. As we strive to build a culture of operational excellence, we also build a sense of pride. One important thing for our community to recognize is that as we continue to grow, the answer isn't always to just build more school, new schools. Our operations team works with our Facilities Committee to continue to leverage the space that we already have to meet our students' needs. But when we absolutely must expand into new school buildings, there's no district better prepared to seamlessly staff a new school, to staff a new school building than we are here in Olentangie. Our HR team put their skills to the test in moving Olentangie teachers into CDL last year, and then moving them back to their home schools while simultaneously hiring and staffing Shale Meadows in the fall of '21. Last fall, next steps here is last fall, we piloted a new texting tool that we would provide for increased dialogue between parents and building staff. We're exploring implementing this at the middle and high school levels. We're also in the process of reviewing and auditing board and superintendent committees and are creating efficient work plans for each of these groups. And lastly, the final area I will discuss is our strategic priority, learning and organizational development, and the goals within establishing our brand identity, fostering leadership development, and ensuring mastery of learning. Over the past three years, much work has been done to create a brand identity for the district and each individual school. The brand identities put into words and phrases what it truly means to be a member of Olentangie Schools family and each school community. We developed visual representations that are inclusive, consistent, eliminate trademark infringements, and are able to be trademarked and monetized for a new income stream for the district and our schools. Next up, we'll be determining the mascot, the colors, and the marks for middle school six. The Communications Department here has implemented a trademark and licensing program, which approves vendors to work with our logos and marks, and also approves or denies all designs that use our school names and logos. Change doesn't happen overnight, so we're trying to get to everybody still doing this, but we currently have over 40 licensed, approved vendors, and the Communications reviews brand project requests daily to ensure our district and school brands remain intact. Each year here with fostering leadership development, each year our professional development has focused on a theme that we want to enhance for our staff, which will in turn benefit our students. Last year, staff learning was centered around creating a sense of belonging in our schools, our classrooms, teams, and more. This year, Vince DiTilio presented to the board about learner agency and how we position our students in a more, in more empowered roles as learners. Mr. DiTilio, Mr. Wright, and Mrs. Davis have also unified our administrator legion lessons to be around the portrait of a learner dispositions, which I'll discuss more in a minute here. Coming up, we will be releasing a new Olentangie Professional Development Academy platform for professional learning. The new platform will incorporate real-time feedback in all of our PD offerings and differentiated opportunities for the location and the method of learning. And lastly, we know that academic excellence is consistent here in Olentangie. However, we are never complacent. We know that we can always get better. We've developed benchmarks in our annual report with standards higher than the norms of our similar districts and the state. We do this so we can continue to challenge ourselves to provide academic, better academic experience for all of our students. This year's annual report had us meeting 18 out of 21 indicators. And while we know our students continue to succeed academically, three years ago, we embarked on a journey to answer the question, what do we want our students to be like as adults? Our community, our teachers, and our students partnered with us to chart this course. The outcomes we identified prove that maximizing every student's learning is marked by more than just acquiring knowledge, but also developing key dispositions as a learner along the way. Staff are implementing lessons around teaching students to be purposeful, resilient, curious, and kind, so they flourish as learners in the classroom and beyond. Looking ahead, I'm pleased to share middle school and high school scheduling is underway. Hiring for '22, '23 has already begun, and Mr. DiTilio and the curriculum team have already begun to plan next year's staff professional development. In February, we held our third and final PD day, and the feedback was overwhelmingly positive. 87% reported valuable or very valuable. Those are incredibly strong results, and I believe they're indicative of our, indicative of our ability to stay in tune with the needs of our staff as they work to facilitate maximum learning for every student. The ongoing success of our district will The ongoing success of our district will continue to be dependent on strong support of teachers and staff so they can meet the needs of every student. So as I conclude, and we move through our day-to-day activities and responsibilities, it's difficult to pause and reflect on the impactful work that happens every day here in Olin Tangi. The report, this report gives all of us on the leadership team especially, the opportunity to do just that, just that, pause and reflect. It also holds us accountable, ensures that we are purposeful in our work as we continue to move this district forward. I can say without reservation, I can say confidently that our students, our staff, leaders, parents, everyone here strives to live the mission to facilitate maximum learning for every student, every day. And I am infinitely proud of the people and the work that makes Olin Tangi schools the special place it is. Thank you.
All right, excellent report. Any questions for Mr. Wright? Kevin, you got any questions down there?
Thank you, just a comment, thank you. It is a special place to be.
Well, you know, again, there's just, there's so much, I know it was long.
It was good.
But first draft was even longer. So, I don't get it, I get to stay.
I'll give you the superintendent's report.
Yeah, I tried to cut this out since I wasn't going to be, because I wasn't going to be up here so long, but I got overruled by the communications department because there's always so much great stuff to share. I had the opportunity to attend this event on March 3rd called Seeds of Change. How many teachers participated?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four teachers took a course facilitated by our curriculum team on a program called Seeds of Change, and they opted into this new type of professional learning. And the course was sought to inspire teachers to design, to design a personal inquiry project, perform research, and develop a product that would have meaningful, impactful student learning. And then, so the teachers kind of did what they make their kids do. They came and presented in a roundtable forum, and parents and other staff members and administrators, some students came and got to hear their presentations, and they're putting their, this into practice in their classrooms. And we're excited to watch those seeds of change grow all throughout the district. So we compliment those staffs. This is one of my favorite slides coming up. So, two weeks ago Tuesday, about?
Yeah, something like that, last Tuesday.
Two special young ladies, Ebony and Essence Wise, were honored by the Blue Jackets. I was, actually, I wasn't at the game, Mr. Wright was at the game, and I get a text with picture of their picture on the Jumbotron. They received national recognition, recognition for their talent and resiliency in breaking through barriers in sports, because there's, quite honestly, not a lot of female hockey players in the world, and especially female hockey players of color. So we applaud them. I understand it was just a great evening for the Wise family, so.
It was.
Coming up, we have our One Community Conference, or actually, I'm sorry, take that back. We just completed on February 28th our One Community Conference African-American Read-In. We had these authors, it was a virtual presentation, but these authors shared their journey to become authors. They shared their experiences and advice with our students and families. One of the, there's a young lady, I can't remember how old she was, 11, was a published author as part of this group, so that was a really a great presentation by our equity inclusion team. And then, we are the top fundraising district in the state for the American Heart Association. I highlight two schools here, Walnut Creek and Tyler Run, ended up in the top 10 schools in the Ohio-Kentucky region, did a great fundraising campaign. Mrs. Lambert is a teacher there, had an issue, so they were highly, certainly highly motivated at Walnut Creek, so I compliment them on their efforts. If you have an opportunity to see a literally Broadway-quality performances that happen in our district at a much more reasonable price than you'd pay if you go downtown, but Liberty High School is performing Mary Poppins, and Berlin High School will be performing Mamma Mia here coming up in March. So, great, great performances all the time by all of our theater productions, so. If I really had, you know, if I hadn't expended so much energy on the State of the Schools report, I might have, you know, popped into an ABBA song with Mamma Mia, but I don't want to embarrass myself too.
That's why Mrs. Davis made it long. She didn't do that.
Highlighting some action items here, I do want to highlight the resignation of Maquila Thomas. She is our Assistant Director for Equity and Inclusion. At the end of this year, her family is relocating out of state, so just want to pick her to replace Jackie Merkel when she left us a year or so ago, and she's done a great job stepping into that role and keeping the ball moving forward for the equity and inclusion team, so we will now start that process to find her replacement. So, a couple corrections I want to highlight there that we've had to make to some staffing issues, and then there are three amendments to the contract for Fanning Howie as we continue to do work throughout the district. Elementary school media centers are all being redesigned, preschool, four additional preschool playgrounds, creation of collaboration space in Olin Tangi High School and Liberty Middle School, and then some renovations here at our district offices. Those were all planned for as part of the last, the 2020 bond issue. And then there's our important dates coming up. We, as I mentioned previously, it's hard to believe, but third quarter ends this week and we're starting, which means we are rounding third and heading for home with the fourth quarter coming up, and our next board meeting is March 24th.
All right, very good. Any questions for Mr. Wright on the superintendent's report? Nope. All right, thank you. All right, the next agenda, Treasury's report.
I do not have anything to report.
Okay. And just for the record, she's sitting in for Ms. Hadfield tonight, who sustained a knee injury in a fall, and she's been, kind of, her mobility has been challenged, so hopefully we wish her well and hopefully she gets back to good health. Okay, that brings us to public participation.
Sir, we'd like to remind everyone that public participation is the community's time to present any ideas, issues, or concerns to the Board of Education. Public participation is not a dialogue or discussion, it is an opportunity to present any ideas or concerns to the Board in public forum. The Board of Education will respectfully listen to the comments. Public participation will last for a maximum of 30 minutes. Each participant has a limit of three minutes to address the Board of Education. Participants will not be allowed to secede their three minutes to another person. Participants must state their full name and address when stepping to the podium. Public participation procedures are established by the Board of Education Policy 0169.1. The policy was revised by the Board of Education on October 12th of 2021. The policy in its entirety is available on the district website as an exhibit to the October 12th, 2021 meeting minutes.
I think we should look into getting a smaller bin.
At this time, I would like to call Mike Coleman to the podium, please. Mr. Coleman, if you could state your name and your address, please?
Yeah, Mike Coleman, Powell, Ohio. Well, folks, that was quite a good school report I heard there tonight. Unless I didn't hear this, I don't think I heard anything about the matters that many of the parents here have been coming to speak to you about around CRT, social-emotional learning, the guidelines, the curriculum around those topics, and the things that have been happening between the school board and the parents. And as I understand it, it's one of, that is a topic that's supposed to be kind of compiled by you guys, curated and rolled up to the Board of Education. With this particular meeting format where we just stand here and just tell you what our concerns are, and we keep talking about the same topic, this just turns into what I heard last week, you guys call a scene, a ranting session, public theater. I just don't know what else it could be, because there's just no dialogue here, and there's no reporting on the grievances and concerns that these precious parents have regarding their children. This is just silly. There needs to be better cooperation and collaboration in that way. Tonight, I'd like to request, in the spirit of transparency and sunshine laws and this sort of thing, that I be made available to see the CRT, the SEL, and related and close cousin topics, the material that is being used to help these teachers dive into those topics with the children. I'd like to see at what age this begins. I'd like to see that curriculum, or how those topics are communicated and worked into the classroom. I really do want to see that.
One minute remaining.
Thank you. I have run into a number of your staff members who are very unhappy with the way things are happening here between the school board and the community. Some of you know that. Others of you, maybe you don't know, but I'm here to tell you, they're unhappy. Lastly, some of these what parents would call rogue curriculums, like CRT, SEL, and related, they are getting reined in across the country. It's just, it's not if, it's just a matter of time, and I hope you guys are ready to be able to rebuild the relationships you have destroyed with this community when that time comes. Please start winding it back and start building these relationships with this community now. Don't wait. Thank you.
So, I don't know if it's Mr. Wright or Ms. Griffin, will you take the A on getting this public records request? Maybe if you could sidebar to make sure that it's specific enough that we could meet his needs, but, okay, next item.
If you could state your name and your address, please?
My name is Parker Parker. I live at 5880 Bluestone Way. Good evening, Mr. Wright and the Board of Education. Thank you for giving me the time to speak this evening. I remember the first day of junior year as one thing, anxiety. Unlike many cisgendered students who are happy to see their friends and catch up from summer break, the whole day I was concerned and worried about one thing, being deadnamed and misgendered by my new teachers. The anxiety and fear resulting from this followed me throughout the day until I subsided in one class. It subsided because my teacher asked our class to share our name and pronouns. By my teacher asking me this, I found a sense of belonging, a sense of hope, but also a sense of relief. For once in my life, I didn't have to worry about fighting for my true identity. Just by my teacher asking, it showed she cared. However, this relief will not be available to me or any other trans students again due to the current pronoun policy that is limiting teachers from directly asking or surveying students about our pronouns because it's a sex behavior or attitude. Simply put, this policy is harmful to trans students in our district, harmful to students in our district, especially our trans and non-binary students. Already, trans students are extremely vulnerable, especially with mental health. According to the Trevor Project, 52% of non-binary and trans youth have seriously considered or attempted suicide this past year. I'm a part of that 52%, along with so many of my queer friends. The reason why is due to the lack of acceptance around us. I've always been a student in the Olin Tangi School District. For me and many other trans students, this experience has not been positive. We constantly face being deadnamed, misgendered, and forced to endure ignorant comments by staff and students. Every slur, every time I'm misgendered or deadnamed, it feels as if a part of my true self is being chipped away, except these chips can't be glued back on. They're permanent reminders that society does not see people like me as my true self. The current board policy limiting teachers from directly asking our pronouns doubles down on this trauma for trans youth.
One minute left.
The Trevor Project also discovered that trans and non-binary youth who have their pronouns respected are 11% less likely to attempt suicide. That is all it takes, one simple question to reduce the possibility of a student like me to attempt suicide by drastic numbers. But pronouns can't be respected if no one knows what yours are and they can't ask. Our current board policy is limiting teachers from doing this, and it's only going to fuel this Trevor Project suicide statistics. All I'm asking for right now is to be respected as a human being. Right now, I'm being asked, I'm asking our school board to change the policy and not equate asking for pronouns as a sex behavior or attitude. The current policy makes teachers feel feelful to ask students for their pronouns. While I understand the board's concern about a misinterpretation of laws the school board used to make this policy, it is unacceptable that our board has not found a balance between parental concerns and the well-being and respect our trans students deserve, because in all, we cannot facilitate.
You can finish, please. Go ahead and finish.
Facilitate maximum learning for every student when not every student, such as trans students like me, don't feel safe, accepted, and valued in our district. And our current pronoun policy, which is limiting teachers from asking students their pronouns, is preventing me and many other trans students of having a sense of belonging in our community and district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Would Jordan Knight, please, come up? If you could please state your name and your address?
Jordan Knight, Misty Dawn Drive, Columbus. Good evening, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm the proud father of two girls in fourth and fifth grade at Oak Creek. We're so grateful for our admin and teachers and staff there. Here tonight, because we received an email from the school letting us know that fifth grade growth and development presentation would be given sometime between now and the end of the year by the school nurse. My wife and I looked through the slideshow and thought, God bless the nurse presenting this topic of hormones and changing bodies to a group full of young kids. As we looked through the booklet that went along with the slideshow, though, again, for elementary, fourth, and fifth grade students, we were disappointed to find references to differences between biological sex and gender identity in the content. Back in the fall, when LGBTQ month was changed from the month of June to the month of October, providing an avenue for this content to be discussed in public schools, we were surprised that the district would promote and celebrate this. There were documents sent out by the equity and inclusion staff to educate parents and students on the 20 different gender identities that are celebrated today. We reached out with concern and were sure that this content would not be discussed at the elementary level, but of course, here we are. Fully believe that equity and inclusion is essential in a community, but one group's ideology cannot and should not be taught as universal truth in a public school. In our home, we believe you should love your neighbor as yourself. We believe that people always have the freedom to have their own beliefs and live their lives as they see fit. We are certainly no one's judge. We also believe that we have the freedom to not agree with, validate, or celebrate other people's personal beliefs and viewpoints. Gender identity is an ideology, certainly not settled science. People's personal opinion and theories absolutely cannot be taught as truth in public schools, and if permitted, allows for a slippery slope of ever-changing policy based on whatever the cultural issue de jour is. I don't demand that my ideologies or religion or viewpoints or political perspectives be taught by the district. If I want that done, I didn't roll my kids in private school. Your role as a public school is not to disseminate a specific ideology, but to provide a foundation of universal truths to our kids, such as math, science, history, reading, and writing, so that when ready, they have the tools needed to make an informed decision for themselves with the guidance of their parents. It seems to me that the district would be better served abstaining from taking sides on issues like this and leaving those conversations to be had by the parents where they belong. As I said previously, this is not an issue of legitimacy of any given viewpoint, but simply the delineation of the school's role in our students' lives and the parent's role. It's my hope that the district reconsider their policy on this matter and return It's my hope that the district reconsider their policy on this matter and return our students' curriculum to the basics. Thanks.
That is all the public participation we have for tonight.
All right. We'll now transition to Section 10, our discussion items. Call up to the podium Dr. Jack Fetti for the first reading of Board Policy Updates.
Good evening. The Boards Policy Committee met on February 16th to review the policies that have been provided for you. There are, it's a rather light batch of policies in comparison. And a number of the policies you may have noticed were policies that were just approved by the Board in November, but there have been a few changes to ORC that caused some minor changes after we adopted those. So there's just some small changes there. Were there any questions on any of the policies?
Are all of these driven by ORC or is there anything that came before the committee before my time?
They're all driven by ORC or what's known as EDGAR, which is out of the U.S. Department of Education.
Okay.
Administrative Guidelines for Schools.
ORC just revokes the Ohio Revised Code.
Ohio Revised Code, yes.
I, I have a question and it's about backstory that you may or may not know, but Policy 2271, College Credit Plus.
Yes.
And there's some new regulations around students that have to be 18 and registered with Selective Service.
Selective Service, yeah. So that was one of the policies that we approved in November and then the state added to it after the fact, after we did that, that in order to be eligible for College Credit Plus, if you are 18, you have to register for the Selective Service. I don't know.
Like the draft, right?
Right, right.
I just, that really caught my eye, having a 17-year-old that's about to be 18. And is that a new Ohio?
I had to do it when I went to college. Been around for all of it.
No. I don't remember doing that when I was 18.
Mr. O'Brien, point of clarification, if I might.
Sure.
I think when you do anything for college, if I remember way back many years ago, you had to register for Selective Service to almost do anything at a college and, um...
Yeah. And it was federal funding.
Right.
And this is just clarifying the extension of that policy to College Credit Plus.
It's ironic that it came out, that we added it right before a war broke out or invasion, whatever. I just thought the timing was, I don't know, caught my eye.
Anything else?
No, no, I'm up to date on the process.
Right? Come up and talk about the 2023, 2024 calendar.
Yes, we are looking about 18 months out now. This is the annual presentation of the district calendar. This works in two readings per policy and per components of our negotiated agreement. We will present the information here tonight to you as our draft. This information will be shared with our staff and our community with a link to provide feedback on this draft, with the board recap that will come out in the next couple of days. We are required to collect feedback for a minimum of 30 days. So once this is shared, we will collect data and information and feedback through April 15th. I do want to highlight just a few things. This is a calendar that is anchored in the philosophy we have developed over the last several years based on need and based on feedback from staff and community. And also want to add that with Ms. Eddy here tonight, this calendar is created, the joint partnership between our team and our, our team with OTA. So we do thank them for their input as we work on this draft. So we are offering or recommending a traditional start date of the third Thursday in August, which has been the same for about the last five years. One of the different things we're presenting on this calendar that will seek feedback is in October, we have our Coda Day. We have split this up prior to have two Fridays off in a row. And so we wanted to give feedback with a slight change that we're making it a Thursday and Friday within the same week and extending the first quarter slightly. So we will see that, that in the week of October 16th, it's a three-day student week with a teacher work day and then our traditional Coda Day off on Friday, the 20th. Regarding winter break, we, it's kind of interesting. Winter break exists the way we are drawing this up. We have the traditional holidays during winter break, which occur on Mondays on the calendar we're presenting. So presents some unique issues about when to come back and when to leave. So what we did is we started with where do we want to finish the year? And so if you'll look to May, we have in the past several years done all we can to be finished by Memorial Day. So we started with that in mind with a teacher work day on May 24th. And so what we have for a winter break is maximizing the number of school days in the first semester and second semester with the known start date of August 17th and our traditional finish date of May 24th. So it does wrap around and it essentially becomes a Wednesday to Wednesday break, which is not something we typically do, but with the placement of the holidays, it seems to make the most sense in our draft. And then the last item of note is that our traditional spring break is presented as the last week in March of 2024. So I present that to you. Any immediate questions that I could answer for you?
I guess one question, just look at the minimum, like, we don't do snow days anymore. We have a minimum number of hours we have to be in session. Based upon this calendar, kind of where are we versus the minimum hours?
With the high school, with our high school day, I would say we are, we have a cushion of approximately 30 days. And at the, Jack helped me, on the elementary and middle, they're in the twenties, about 23, 24 extra days with about another seven days at the high school, because we do have a very long high school day.
High school schedule, great. Any other questions on the calendar?
Just one quick one. Can you clarify for people that might watch this or, or that are here, what Coda Day is? Teachers know what Coda Day is, but folks that aren't teachers might not know.
The, it is a central...
When I first moved here, I thought it was for the buses.
I did too back in 1999 and quickly earned as a teacher. No, it meant something different. But it is a Central Ohio teaching group that has hosted a variety of professional development on a typical day. And so a large number of Central Ohio districts have that day off for staff to be able to take on an additional growth opportunity should they choose, instead of having staff request and us needing subs and it becoming a disruption to education. Over the years, it evolved to, with our partnership, it made more sense to have that day off so teachers could choose to use that, that day for professional development.
Just a clarification, you said our district provides 30 days above the minimum.
That's not the exact number, but with, you know, we have to have a minimum of, I think it's 1,001 hours. Yeah, for high school, we have to have 1,001 hours to be minimum. And with the educational minutes at the high school level, we have an additional 30-some days built in of the minimum hours that we would be able to accumulate. If, if we had a calamity of sorts and missed five weeks of school at the high school level, we would still meet the minimum state requirements for hours of instruction.
And that's elementary as well?
It's a little bit less. It, it staggers down. I know the high school number is 1,001 and then it's something in the 900s and then something very close to 900. And all of the levels have a minimum cushion of four weeks. Middle school is close to five and then no, high school is almost seven weeks.
Safe to say we far exceed what the state requires for...
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely, sir.
I know it's not a district, it's not, never on the district calendar, but would graduation probably be the 19th of May?
Yes, again, traditionally, we have looked at the Sunday before Memorial Day for our commencement exercises. I believe we are maintaining or making sure we do an extension with the Ohio State University for securing the Schadenstein Center with that targeted Sunday. So on this calendar, in 2024, I would anticipate our graduation would be Sunday, the 19th of May.
We anticipate traditional graduation this year?
We've already sent that out.
Already sent, all right, thank you. Well, let's reiterate that.
We are on...
We are in contract.
We're, we're, first time ever, we'll be hosting all four.
Yes.
So it'll be a jam-packed day.
That's great.
Yeah.
All right, anything else on the calendar?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Davis, we're going to talk about middle school number six, please.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. So we are now at that point where we are going to, you are going to name middle school six. So we have conducted a survey in our community and we'll share those results here. First, I wanted to remind us all of the board policy for naming a school facility. And so the, the naming of the school is the Board of Education's responsibility. The mascot and colors comes later. But right now, our board policy directs us to have names based on local history or geography, no directional names, no names of historical figures or individuals. So we currently...
And this has been the policy of the district for as long as I can remember, right?
Me too, yes. And as I shared at OEF last night, I've lived in the district 32 years, which is really a lot. All the buildings were named during that time except for Olentangie, the original. So anyway, Olentangie's five middle schools have been named after either townships or streets in the district. Just to kind of remind us, Berkshire, Liberty, Orange, Hyatt, Shanahan. There's some overlap there between some go both ways with townships and streets. We received 280 suggestions to the middle school six survey, which was exciting, and 121 suggestions were for Olentangie Berlin Middle School. And then you can see the next responses we received, Glenmead Middle School, Gregory, Pyatt, because the school is on Pyatt Road, and so on. And then you can see that the suggestions ended up being two, three, four people from pretty much on down those first, after those first couple. So, given that the suggestion was made for Olentangie Berlin Middle School overwhelmingly and the school is located adjacent to Olentangie Berlin High School, which was the reason most often given for suggesting this name, on behalf of the district leadership team, we are recommending the name for middle school six be Olentangie Berlin Middle School.
I like it. I think it makes sense, right? If you think the middle schools, Orange Middle goes to Orange High, Liberty Middle goes to Liberty High, Berlin Middle will go to Berlin High. It's very consistent with how we've addressed this issue, so I think it makes a lot of sense.
Does it cause any acronym issues since we already have an...
We have discussed the acronym issues with OBMS being Olentangie Berkshire Middle School, and so that's more of a internal coding or, you know, a naming convention that we use. And so we have brainstormed ways to address that internally to differentiate between the two schools. If they have logo wear that say OBMS, they're going to have different colors and different mascots that will differentiate them externally. But internally, we have figured out how to best manage that within our systems.
Anything else? No?
You have, you do have board action item next for somebody to make a motion and second and whatever. You know, of course, you do have the right to just pick your own name. We just said that as our own recommendation, but you know. And I, I'm sorry, I just, I do want to reiterate, because a lot of the people said during their suggestions that it just makes sense because it will be a total direct feeder to Berlin High School. We haven't done the redistricting process and that is not certain by any stretch. And you know, Liberty Middle School was actually a 100% feeder to Olentangie High School when it was opened. And then obviously fed Liberty, all Liberty High, but now it is split. Orange is still the 100% direct feeder, as is Shanahan, but...
It's highly likely, but not necessarily...
Thank you for that bit of clarification, Mr. O'Brien.
There will ask trick to that.
That'll get used.
Okay.
We said...
All right. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay.
All right. So now we'll go right into it and I'll present board action item A. And that action item is to approve the name of middle school number six as Berlin Middle School, Olentangie Berlin Middle School. So I'll entertain a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Kevin, second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Lester? Any discussion? All right, please call the roll, Ms. Griffin.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. So the building is named. All right, Mr. Rafe, would you please present the superintendent action items?
Yes, sir. I'd like to present superintendent action items A through G for approval.
All right, can I have a motion to approve superintendent action items A through G? Is it A through G? Yes, yeah. Second?
I'll second.
Second? Any discussion on the superintendent action items? All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn. Will second, please?
Second.
All right, any discussion on adjournment? All right, please call the roll.
Dr. Wise?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Next meeting is March 24th. Thanks for joining us.